Good evening and welcome to the incorporation of the town of Kirkland Lake. Special meeting of council held March 29, 2016. We have the approval of the agenda. It was moved by councillor Morgan and seconded by councillor Barker that council approves the agenda for its special meeting of March 29, 2016 as presented, all in favor? Thank you. Is there any declaration of pecuniary interest? None declared? Reports of municipal officers and communications. Nancy, are you going to read this off?
I'm going to just preamble it and I'm going to ask Mark and Wolf to come up and sit at the table just what our discussion has been to date and then I'm going to ask Mark to talk to you about the technical piece of it and the references and I'm going to ask Wolf to talk to you about the funding. A few things that we want to bring to your attention about this particular system. We're talking about the 4E2 smart energy system. We do feel when we're looking at applying this system to the build of the new pool, we felt like 20 years is too long a recovery for this kind of a project and that, you know, there may be other technical advances made that are going to change that in time and before 20 years possibly. We also feel it's too much money for the municipality to fund ourselves. We do feel that it is the green thing to do, that it's the right thing to do, that there will be cost savings and it definitely is the way of the future and we like it. We believe that we can access 80% funding from the Green Fund, hopefully, and we need a very detailed study and a very good application in order to do so and Wolf's going to talk a little bit about that. To wait on this detailed study and the Green Fund application to be finalized will hold up the pool construction. So we do have a proposal that we'd like to put forward for council's consideration, but first I'd like to have Mark come up and talk about the actual 4E2 smart energy system and give you some details about the references and where he's gone to see it and RFP and that kind of thing.
Okay, so just a bit of the background. Everybody hopefully recalls Foster Rosetto attending council and proposing is the smart energy system. Council had approved to apply for funding for that for their preliminary engineering study, so we authorized them to do that and they've gone through and prepared the report. In conjunction with getting the pool ready to go, we're at the critical stage now to that we have to make a decision to go or no go or otherwise or a combination so that we do not put the pool construction schedule at risk. We want to be closed in by December so that construction can continue for the pool so that the proposed opening date of next year happens. So we looked at the system, the report. We had Saltre Pilon, which is the architect for the pool, do references with different places that have put the system in, although there's no exact comparison that has a pool and ice pads. There's places that have several ice pads and others that have small pool and housing units. So when we looked at the references coming back from Saltre Pilon, the one was at the Spring Hill Residence, which is the one that we had attended together to look at the system. The system was working well. It was a little different. The generator used in that one was a different style. They've gone to a different brand at this point. Everything that was producing heat was being recovered and the system does the heating and cooling with very few moving parts. There's no compressors in the dehumidification areas. It's all heat coils, heat and cooling coils that interact. They also reject heat back to the ground and into ground floor heating for their underground parking, their sidewalks and whatnot in the area. So they do a very good job at recovering every, anybody of heat they can. We attended with Saltre Pilon and EXP, the mechanical and electrical consultants. They seemed impressed with the system. They do see that the energy savings is a reality. The concerning part, there's a few concerns about the coordination of the program, although we've worked that out. It wouldn't impact the schedule as well as some of the questions about electrical components and to be changed and whatnot, although that was included. One of the concerning areas was the payback period from the references. Eve Lebel was another reference from Capus Gasing, although that's an ongoing project. They're looking at their two ice surfaces and curling rink. And then the company out of Minnesota was where they've had several different installations, although they have dehumidification and ice making. They don't have a Cogen and no pools, so a little bit different. But kind of what happened, what we saw was the payback period was always a little different than what was proposed in the end. So looking at a 20-year payback that we're looking at now, knowing that may fluctuate without, especially without being at the detailed engineering study phase, that would be the concerning portion of it, obviously the financing of it. But as far as the system itself, running Cogen and power, it's a smart energy system so it's run by, like similar to a SCADA system where everything is monitored. It also is set up so that it's monitoring the grid and the time of day usage and it determines the best way to power the facility based on cost savings. So at this point, we're looking at future opportunities and funding. We have a concern with the 20-year payback, whether that will fluctuate the rate based on OCFa and the, our status under the ability to apply for OCFa loans, although their mandate is longer loans over 20 years. We have to know what we're, well, we know where our debt rate is now and this, it's, you know, we may or may not be successful with OCFa for that. So we'd have to go to a bank and then there's no guaranteed rate over a 20-year period. Technical wise as well, the systems operate, the Cogen comes in its own container system. It doesn't take up any room in the facility. It's basically plug and play. It's a silenced unit. And then the heat pumps are pre-built based on what you need and you just add more units. So in the facility we saw down in King City, they had eight, eight different units stacked in, although if any, but they only operate, I think it's three at a time and they cycle them. And then if any one goes down, you're never without heat or heat for that, for that heat pump system. Similar at the complex, they would size it accordingly for that and again, the systems are expandable at any time. This installation does not include solar at this time. It's just Cogen and heat pumps from the ground, the geothermal. You could add in solar later, speaking with them. It's not of a great benefit. It would subsidize a bit of the runtime on the generator, but would mainly be maintaining the batteries on the generator. So the cost of the solar and the return on it would come out in a detailed engineering study, but they're not proposing it at this time, nor is CAP going forward with the solar. They're just running Cogen and geothermal. I don't know, is there any other technical or questions on the smart energy system?
Councillor Morgan?
Yeah, first of all, I just want to express my appreciation for staff even looking at something like this. I think it's very progressive and I really like the concept and the idea and I hope that the detailed study comes back favorable. I mean, I think this is a win-win, or it could be a win-win. The question I have, Mark, is now, the Cogen plant is essentially a reciprocating engine. Is there a warranty on that or is there a maintenance contract that comes with that so that we can rest easy that that's not going to be, you know, a big dollar item down the road? I know, I saw in one of your emails that there's a 25-year rebuild schedule on that, but what about in the interim as far as maintaining it?
Well, in Trac's report, they do indicate that maintenance was factored in on it. The unit itself has been proven in other facilities as running well. The typical maintenance of their whole system and speaking with them would be no more than the current system because there's less moving parts within the heat pumps and whatnot, although they factored that in as neutral over maintenance costs of what's currently being budgeted for, just because they don't want to make it look even better than what they're saying. As far as the generator itself, the warranty on it is 24 months. It's a two-year warranty on, from the manufacturer. And then the maintenance with the, with smart energy, they monitor remotely for a couple of years. They're not tied, they're not tied to them as proprietary software or maintenance program. They do involve all local contractors to become involved and trained on it and what they're seeing is in their installs after the first year, they're not getting any calls to them. They're actually calling them, the people that have put the system in to make sure everything's running well because they're being called upon for maintenance or operational changes.
Okay, and I guess it'd be the same thing for the heat pumps?
Heat pumps, similar.
Okay. Now, and again, I guess a lot of this is going to come out in the detailed engineering study. The, first of all, the detailed engineering study will be done by somebody like with our group, like with the people who are doing the complex now or will it be a standalone firm?
Well, the, there's the two stages, so the preliminary engineering study and then the detailed. So it'll be done by Trac, which is a partner to 4E2.
Right.
And then they go through it and do the detailed engineering study on their proposed system.
The overlap, if, because it doesn't look right now like we're going to be ready with all of our studies and all of our funding to bake this completely into the pool construction right now. What kind of backtracking, like dollar figure are we looking at as far as if we move forward with a conventional system and then switch to this down the road? Are we looking at something like, you know, tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands?
Well, in the current pool project, it's a, it's a, well, it's part of their contract through Montieth that they have to provide the pool and the mechanical, electrical subtrades to do that portion of it. They are looking at heat recovery from the ice plant to form part of that, to try and make, get some efficiencies going.
Okay.
The current furnaces in the, at the complex are only a few years old, so there's life left in them. There's not a lot of, well, there's some upcoming expenses for the ice plant itself, but going forward, so they would design the mechanical, electrical system, which would, we would not, that wouldn't be recoup, the design of it. And then the, the pool heating system as well. So that pool heating system would become redundant because everything would be coming from the Cogen afterwards under heat exchange. The, the Cogen itself, as I said, it's a separate unit. It's a plug and play, so that's just an addition into it for electrical, electricity.
So conceivably, we could, they could design the pool a little bit to accommodate this sort of plug and play aspect of it down the road, right?
Yeah, of the, the Cogen facility, for sure. The, the heat pump loops, well, they would be put in off-site, off the footprint of the new building. Depending on the size, it may interrupt the parking lot for a while. And then the room involved for tying in the, the heat pump systems would be the, where the current furnaces are now. So it could be done as a retrofit, but you're going to, and the dehumidification, you're going to typically do the Dryatron type dehumidifiers. Those can be retrofitted. Basically, they take out the compressor units in them and just bring in the hot and cold loops to do that. So it is, it is possible, although we will be looking at the engineering design for it and some of the mechanical components would become redundant after.
The only other question I have, the Capus Gasing project, is that with the same 4E2, is it?
Yeah, it's the same company.
It is, okay. Thanks.
Other questions for Mark before we go to Wolf?
Yeah, Mark, I'm just wondering if we go ahead with the detail of the engineering study, about how long would it take, do you think, just ballpark?
Well, in Trac's proposal, they had mentioned if we wanted, if we were to proceed, they could have an engineering up, an engineer up within a few weeks and within a few weeks have a better cost estimate. Right now, the 2.4 is based on their experience, not the, the actual site. But to complete the study, it's a fairly lengthy process to get that report done and in, so it would be probably three months at the minimum.
Okay, and there was an estimated price tag of $50,000 for the detailed study? And just so I understand, that is refundable to the community or we get funding for that?
Yeah, so, yeah, under the Save On Energy program, the same program that the preliminary engineering study was done, as long as the preliminary engineering study showing it's viable, getting the detailed engineering study done through them is reimbursable up to $50,000 and that's where Trac would set their, their fee for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Councillor Roman?
I just have a quick question. First of all, I'm really in favor of these types of heating systems or, you know, the paybacks there. I know we're talking a long time, but I'm hoping we get more life out of our facility than 20 years. I know they just sort of did a preliminary study now. They're, they're looking at the, going forward with the detailed study, but are they aware of the bedrock up there?
Yes, so I've talked to them about that, that, that bedrock, for the, you know, the geotechnical report shows that bedrock is basically at surface through the whole parking lot and area. So they've drilled in several different ground conditions and there's benefits to both, although in sand and loose material, you're, you're running pipe or you're casing or cementing to, so that adds to the cost. Drilling in bedrock, they, they've done that as well. They find that it's maybe a higher cost for drilling, but you don't have a lot of the other expenses of grouting and, and the seams and whatnot, but the, it's, it's more stable in the end and the, the heat recovery, when they're pumping heat back into the ground, it, it stores the heat better in bedrock than in the other. So that becomes more efficient that way.
Do you think much, much of that? Oh, okay. All right. From here again?
Yeah, just push it.
Yes, at the first meeting that you guys were talking about having extra heat and everything, you're also talking about maybe being able to use that at other places. Does this look into also?
As far as selling the energy to a neighboring?
Well, selling it, excuse me, selling it or maybe be able to maybe pipe it over to the works department to take care of another building that the town owns?
Yeah, so we've looked into that. The, the works department isn't in close enough proximity to make it viable. The high school is, it's a newer facility and that's where, this being expandable, it would be able to do that. There would have to be contracts in place with them and their school board would have to decide on it, so they'd have to do their own study to see if they wanted to bring it in. But the system will do it, but we're not sizing it right now to assume that they are going to buy it off us.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
So Wolf is going to talk to us a little bit about the potential for, for funding opportunities.
Okay, as Nancy mentioned earlier, it, the Federation of Canadian Municipalities has a green municipal fund. They provide 80% on a project up to $5 million project value. In, in the case of energy efficiency projects, you have to show that there's a minimum 40% energy efficiency gain, so that's something that has to be addressed. The deadlines are tight. For September funding announcements, we have to have the final application in by April 15th. That means that the initial review form has to be in today or tomorrow. Part of the initial review form asks for a feasibility study. It's not exactly the same as the engineering study that Mark is referring to. It does ask for other items and I think that they'll have to be built into the work that the firm has contracted. This includes key project risks as well as solutions and discussion of how to manage the risks, financial business case assessment development from the perspective of the operation, maintenance costs of the project, technical explanation of how the project will perform and meet or exceed GMF environmental eligibility criteria, et cetera. So there are a little bit more than just the engineering study, but it's worth it because that is the, I guess you would call it the golden standard, that all applications going into the green energy or the green municipal fund will be evaluated on, right? If your feasibility study doesn't answer those questions upfront, you're not going any further. So it's worth doing those right. And if we're working at this, Mark's timeline of two, three months, that works, we can put a, an initial review form, I hate that term, in and hopefully have the application submitted to the FCM by September 15th. So the faster they get it in, the faster we can put it in and get it into the works for that date. That's all I have for you.
So Wolf, just, this, this, should we be successful with the green fund, funding? It's 80% covered?
80%, up to 80%.
Up to 80%. So we were to get 80. You know, our, our payback and our share would be less than probably four years, three years, so much more palatable than a 20-year payback, for sure.
For sure.
Councillor Roman?
What sort of history does this fund have with projects of this nature?
The, the last intake was the first one that they had and they had 10 applicants. They wouldn't tell me how many were actually approved. In this round, right now, they have 15 applicants as of today. They expect that there will be two or three more and that they expect that when it comes to September, probably increasing by double or so. So the competition is getting higher.
And are you aware of what sort of pool of money they have to?
They are aware of it, but the little bit of background reading I was looking at, you're not just looking at the project per se, you're looking at geographical disbursement across the country, show for money, a lot of other considerations would be brought into that. This project, I think, would meet a lot of those considerations in terms of not only energy efficiency, which is their key mandate, but something that's a little bit different for other municipalities that they can copy. And we are going to see a run on that in the northern part of the province, especially for pools and other recreational facilities, so I think that's a good hit. In terms of projects in the north, CAP is proceeding and they did not apply to the FCM, so I'm sure that there are other communities out there. I haven't done that kind of research, but we're in a good stead there.
Councillor Morgan?
Just, just one comment. As far as, you know, financing this thing goes, yes, it would be fantastic to get the green municipal fund, but having said that, if, if the numbers still come back very favorably, you know, the numbers that we've crunched is based on a 20-year payback, but there's big savings throughout that, that 20 years. So in reality, the payback would be somewhat shorter if we applied all of the savings to the loan. So just don't want to, you know, not look at the, at the potential, you know, economic benefits of this project if, if we don't get the green municipal fund, so just throw that out there.
Yes, from the floor, Ed?
Well, if the funding is available and everything, best case and worst case scenario for the taxpayer, on the high end, what would it cost a taxpayer? And on the low end, what's it going to cost a taxpayer? Because, I mean, we've got to remember what our population is and what our population can afford as far as taxes go. If you're looking at a 0% now to try to save the taxpayer, what are you looking at per year for the taxpayer to pay? Because we're not going to recoup any of that savings as far as the taxpayer goes. Once our taxes are gone, we won't see that savings and we will continue to pay it year after year after year.
I have those numbers here, Wolf.
Thank you.
If we receive the green funding, our share of that is, is $295,000 minus, sorry, $480,000 minus we get $195,000 from Save On Energy Initiative, leaving a balance to fund of 295. When we, when we have money in our budget that we pay those hydro and heat costs with, we would take four years of savings and that's what would pay the balance of that.
So are you saying that it's a 0% to the public?
We're saying that it's a 0%. It will, the payment will come out of the savings that we're saving in heat and energy.
Okay, and that's at the high. How about at the low? Let's say you don't get 80%, you only get 40% or 50%.
Then we would have to come back to council and council would decide how they want to proceed.
Thank you.
Councillor Morgan?
Just to clarify for Ed and for myself, I guess, the, the only difference, Ed, like on the lower, the high side, is the amount of time that we're going to amortize this. There won't be any increase to the taxpayer because all of the savings will be rolled into paying for this, so there should be no net increase to our budget for, for this undertaking. And that's why I'm so much in favor of it because it's, it's a win-win.
That's right. As councillor Morgan said, it's a, the payments would come out, so on the low side, the payments would be longer than, than the four years of payback time. So what, what we were proposing to council this evening was, we'd like to continue with the full study, which is $50,000 and is fully funded to give us the, what we need to put the application ahead. We'd like to continue our application to the Green Fund. We think it looks good. I mean, if this isn't green, I don't know what is. It's a good project and there's probably not a lot of projects in the north like this. We have particularly high hydro costs in Ontario, so, and in northern Ontario, heating costs where it's so cold, so it's, it's a very good project. We'd like to move on with building the pool as designed and look at adding this system later if we receive the green funding. It can be easily added. We will have initially spent a little bit of money, if, if it comes, you know, too late in the process, on, as Mark said, the domestic uh, if, if it comes, you know, too late in the process, on, as Mark said, the domestic heating and, and, uh, some of the mechanical, but the, the sort of, um, you know, the vents and all that kind of stuff is still usable, some of it's plug and play, so, uh, we won't have lost too much. Um, we'd like to, um, uh, uh, put our share, which would be 480, minus the 195 of the Save On Energy Initiative, would leave us 295 balance to fund, which is, uh, right now, looks like a payback over four years, and the engineering study may come out with some little bit different figures, but, uh, that's what we are proposing, how we'd like to, to move ahead. If we are not successful in, in the green fund, then we would, or it's for a lesser amount than we're expecting, we will come back to council with that and see how you'd like to proceed. It's just that we can't hold up the pool construction, they need to be closed by, closed in by October and, uh, but they feel with, they can fit it in at that time.
Okay, I, I have a resolution and I'll read it and we'll see what happens here. It was moved by Counselor Barker, seconded by Counselor, uh, Morgan, that council approves the recommendation from the Director of Physical Services to proceed with the full smart energy study for the Joel Mavernak Community Complex at a fully funded cost of $50,000, and that staff continue with the building of the pool as designed, and that smart energy system be added later if green funding is received. All in favor?
I, I'm just concerned about the word in there that says it's going to proceed only if we receive the green funding. Um, it, it's, it's, it's stating that if we don't get the green funding, then, then we won't be considering that.
That will return, will return to council if green funding is not successful.
council if green funding at 80% is not received. All in favor? Thank you. Have the adjournment, it was moved by Counselor Morgan and seconded by Counselor Barker, that council adjourns its special meeting in March 29, 2016. All in favor? Thank you.